Is there any other items we need to add?
Not at this time.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
A second.
Two seconds.
All in favor? All right. Mr. Batson, you're up first for public information, item six point one.
Um, I think we may need to excuse the chairman.
You're right, you're right. Entertain a motion to excuse Chairman Burton.
Make a motion to excuse Chairman Burton.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, Mr. Batson, six point one.
Good afternoon, Board, and public behind us. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pam Hardy with Duke Energy, and she's got a presentation, and she wants to do a photo shoot.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. I am Pam Hardy, Duke Energy District Manager, supporting Pender County, and today, on behalf of Duke Energy, I do want to present a check in the amount of $25,000 to Pender County Emergency Management in order to provide telecommunications equipment during major storms.
You don't want to be in the picture, and we'll do it up there on the stage?
Sure. Moving along, we're going to go to six point two, Mr. Adams.
Commissioner Springer, members of the Board, good afternoon. My name is Daniel Adams. I'm the Planning and Community Development Director with the county. This afternoon, I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Leann King. Ms. King is the lead consultant on our Comprehensive Land Use Plan project, and she's going to be providing an update on where we are in that project.
Okay. Afternoon, Commissioners. We've got a presentation for you, I think, that's getting teed up right now. We are, I can give you a little bit of a cut to the chase while we're waiting for the presentation to come up. We are through the second round of engagement. So earlier this year, in the spring, we provided an opportunity for the residents of Pender County to take a look at the, what we call the public review draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and folks were given an opportunity to review that. We have some feedback to share today in the presentation about the outcomes of that engagement work, and we will be moving past this point through to the formal adoption process, creating what we call the public hearing draft. We did meet with the planning board, I think, two weeks ago to present the same presentation to them, so the planning board has heard this. After this meeting tonight, again, we'll prepare the public hearing draft of the plan, and then we'll be taking it forward through the public adoption process. Do we think we've got a, let's see if that, okay, that's a different project? There we go. Okay. Yes. Is that better? Okay. I'll try to speak directly into it for those behind me. So, again, I'll just kind of move forward here. We are moving through our twenty-phase, or twenty-month process, five phases. We are about at month fourteen or fifteen, so we're moving into the plan adoption phase with this meeting tonight. So we have conducted two rounds of public engagement, numerous steering committee meetings, a lot of technical analysis and policy analysis, and have feedback to provide to you on the draft of the public review version of the plan tonight. So this is just another visual that shows that twenty-month process and the two rounds of community, what we call community engagement window number one and number two, and phases two and four, and then beginning our work on phase five, the adoption process. Okay, so a little bit about community engagement window number two. There were five community meetings that were conducted. You can see the list in the table on the right of the locations and the dates and times that those were conducted. In addition to that, there was an online survey that was the same materials and kind of activities that were provided in person. People could do them online from April 28th to June 6th. A total of 271 surveys were received. About 128 people attended those in-person meetings, and you can see the breakdown here in the table in terms of how many folks attended the different locations. So we set out at the start of this process some engagement objectives that we wanted to achieve through our two rounds of engagement. They were to make sure that people were satisfied with the engagement that they participated in, that it was representative of the community, and that we increased engagement overall from the last planning opportunity, which was Pender 2.0, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that was adopted in 2017. That was our benchmark for how many people were involved in the process. So when we look at measuring engagement satisfaction, we asked two questions. If people were, and this is both online and in person, if people were comfortable sharing their input today, and you can say, see that 93% were comfortable providing input, and we also asked if people participated in previous events as part of the Imagine Pender 2050 Comprehensive Land Use Plan process. And we actually got 53% of folks said no to that, which means we got a lot of new people participating in this recent round, which is what we want to see. We want to see new people engaging and entering into the process and providing their feedback. When we look at representation of engagement, we ask folks what their age was. In the orange bars, you can see what the 2023 census data is for the different age cohorts in Pender County, and green is the exit questionnaire responses that were provided by the participants. That, it's a voluntary thing. We give that exit questionnaire to folks. They can fill out the sections they want or don't want, so not every participant fills it out. As what we see in, like we see in a lot of communities, it tends to skew a little on the older side. Those folks are particularly more engaged in public engagement processes. We work hard to try to get the 15 to 24 and the 25 to 34 demographic. It's hard to get them, so we tried to push that out through social media and other venues, and we'll continue to try to get people aware of that as we move through the final stages of the process. We also asked which racial or ethnic group most people closely identify with. Again, in the orange, you can see the 2020 census data for Pender County, and the green are the exit questionnaire responses. So we got fairly representative in terms of racial and ethnic kind of identif, folks that, what they identify with. We were a little bit closer, actually, in the first round of engagement, so cumulatively, we're pretty, pretty representative on that front. We also asked the question, if you're Hispanic Latino, and we were very close in terms of those kind of comparisons between the current census data and the exit questionnaire responses. We also increased engagement when we benchmarked it against Pender 2.0. Again, that's the currently adopted Comprehensive Land Use Plan that was adopted back in, excuse me, I said 2017, it was adopted in 2018. That process had a little over 1,300 survey responses. We received over 1,600. They had 155 in-person attendees. We had over 300, so we did kind of achieve the goal there to exceed the last round of public engagement surveys and attendance. So more, just as important is the outcomes. What did we learn from this engagement with the community? So again, we had the online survey and the in-person community meetings where we had several activities that people could engage in and provide their feedback. So one of the first questions that we asked was for people to give their feedback on what we call the vision themes. These are, I like to call them kind of the cocktail speech in terms of what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is trying to achieve, and those are the three themes that you see on the slide here. So the first is coordinating growth, preservation, conservation, and infrastructure. Second, to support Pender County's fiscal health, and the third, to maintain a high quality of life. And this is, I won't read all these words to you, but these are the kind of more detailed descriptions of each of those vision themes that is available in the public review draft of the document that's currently on the county's website. For this first vision theme, as you can see, there was very strong support, so we actually got, I think it was like 81%, if you tally up the strongly support and support, so the good support for that vision theme. This is the second vision theme, again, supporting Pender County's fiscal health, and the support here, again, is pretty strong, so we got about 70% strongly support or support that. 14% were neutral, and about 17% in the do not support or strongly do not support category. And then the final vision theme was maintain a high quality of life, and the feedback that we got on that, again, majority of people either strongly supporting or supporting this concept included in the vision theme, with some folks in the neutral category and about 10% not supporting at some level. We also asked them to provide feedback on the nine goals that are included within the draft of the comprehensive plan and to prioritize those in terms of what the county should be investing in first. And so you can see here, and this, this doesn't total up to 100% because we allowed them to kind of rank them in different ways, but what this tells you is what, how many folks picked the number one category for each of those. So at the bottom, you can see there, supported agricultural and working lands, sustainable and managed growth, both got 45% of the folks ranking them, ranked those number one. Environmental and conservation and resilience was 38. Expanded economic opportunities were 36. This really is helpful just in terms of helping you all as decision-makers think about the different actions that you might want to undertake on a daily, on a, excuse me, an annual basis with respect to implementation of the plan. Sorry about that. We also asked for feedback on the future land use map. We use the acronym FLUM to describe the future land use map. So that is the map that has all of the various colors on it that designates the different types of development and character that can be accommodated based on the vision of the community. So we asked people how much they supported the planning guidance shown on that map and its categories. We got about 45% of folks that said they strongly supported or supported. 29% were neutral, and then you can see about 26% or a little over a quarter did not support to some degree. And this is a copy of that public review draft of that map. We've already started making some adjustments based on the feedback we received to kind of increase that level of support based on the specific feedback that was provided by different folks that participated in the engagement. One thing to note here is that there were maps that were provided in each of those five meetings that zoomed in on that portion of the county, so people could kind of focus a little more specifically on the area in which they probably lived in, and we were assuming folks would probably go to the location closest to their home. But in each of those meetings, they could provide feedback on all areas of the county. So you can see here, these are the overall takeaways from comments that people provided on the future land use map. So the first one is that there's strong support for conservation and agricultural preservation in this county. People really want to make sure that that is a key feature moving forward within the county and that their efforts to protect those types of lands. Secondly, there's a desire for more opportunities for recreation, parks, trails, boat ramps, green space. People want more opportunities for that to be able to recreate. There's also support for public services, infrastructure, and public safety. You know, you're a growing community, and so there are more demands on you with respect to public facilities and services, and residents recognize that. And then finally, traffic and transportation systems. You know, no surprise, I think, to anyone here that there's more interest in having a reduction in traffic as development occurs and managing some of those kind of land use transportation implications. So what we learned, our takeaways were, was there was pretty strong support for the vision themes. When we, when asked to rank the nine goals, we found that the sustainable and managed growth, supporting agricultural and working lands, expanded economic opportunities, and environmental conservation and resilience kind of rose to the top for the folks that participated in the engagement. We also wanted to note that participants were either neutral or supported the planning guidance shown in the future land use map. We were lucky to get a fair amount of detailed information from folks so that we can make adjustments to that map moving into the public hearing draft of the plan, so we'll resolve a lot of the items that people brought to our attention. They also, we heard a lot from folks that they want to see a balanced approach to development that takes into consideration infrastructure utilities and services needed to serve that development over time and having a more managed growth approach. Again, valuing rural character, agricultural lands, and environmental assets, and people identified stormwater, flooding, and traffic as challenges that we need to be addressing on an ongoing basis. So in terms of our next steps, we are finalizing the documentation of the public engagement. I believe that will be up shortly on the county's website for those that might want to see any detail. We are almost through incorporating any edits to the public hearing draft. We wanted to make sure and get through this meeting tonight and give you all a chance to provide feedback to us before we wrapped that up. And then we kind of move this, so you can see that kind of sub-bullet there briefing the planning board and Board Academy Commissioners, this meeting checks that box. So then we really move into finalizing the public hearing draft. We are currently in coordination with the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management for their preliminary review of the plan as part of the CAMA certification requirements, so that is underway. There will be a presentation to the planning board and requests for their endorsement of the plan, and then we will come to you all once we have their endorsement to, to a public hearing for requesting adoption for the plan and later get final certification on the plan to meet the Coastal Area Management Act. With that, I will take any questions that you have. Happy to report out tonight.
Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate the time and effort that you and your organizations put in this, and the planning department, Mr. Adams, and the steering committee. I helped champion this, I hope, and I was glad to see we got to it. And now, you know, listening to people every day that weren't a part of this necessarily, but they have the same concerns, so it's a very strong indication that that's what the community as a whole, a lot of these are their, their priorities and concerns. Now I just hope that we take this and build something on it that we can use to help us with our, not reducing growth, but controlling growth and putting it in the right places instead of having what we have now. I mean, it's just, my opinion, it's a mess because we're all over the place. If we'd had this, a good map like this where we identified certain areas and stuck to it in the past instead of piecemeal in it as we went, I think we would have been at this point already. But once again, thank you all for your efforts.
Anybody else got anything?
I have one.
Oh, sorry, you did have a question, sorry.
I met with you a couple times, and I appreciate it, and it was all about flooding and growth, and hopefully, we can take this model and make it better for the citizens of Pender County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. What is our total population of the county? Just one more time. Do you know, did you, were you able to?
Good question.
Get a good number for that?
Yeah, it's around 70,000.
It's what now?
Around 70,000. That's total population.
Around 70,000, okay.
Yep.
What percentage of the public participated in this?
I believe we were at 2%, and I've got kind of a follow-up comment on that, if you will allow me. We do, I do comprehensive planning every day. This is what I do for communities across the United States, and we get a lot of questions from particularly elected officials about what percentage of the population is representative in a comprehensive land use planning process. It's less than, you see people show up for elections, but what's the right kind of percentage or number to be thinking about? We did We did kind of back-of-the-envelope calculations for Boston, Denver, Charlotte, Tulsa, there might have been a couple of others in there. These are communities that were spending two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to a half a million dollars on public engagement alone, really kind of pulling out all the stops in terms of trying to get people engaged in their big, kind of larger cities. You'd be interested to find out, two percent was what they were kind of capping out as spending those kinds of resources, all the social media, all of the fancy things that you can do. So that's what we kind of aim to achieve, is two percent, because generally speaking, that's how many people turn out for a comprehensive twenty-year policy plan. That's not to say that we don't want to get more. That's not to say we don't want to do as much as we can and make it a choice for everyone to be involved. There's just a lot of, in terms of getting in front of people, getting their attention and getting their time, there's a lot of things that we're kind of having to work against, so.
So Commissioner Tate, you were, the first round, the community involvement, you hadn't been on the boards yet, and it was interesting that when we went to the western side of the county, where you expect to have the lower numbers of turnout just because of the population, we had the bigger. And we got, come to Hampstead thinking we would have a huge turnout, and we had twelve. And then to see the numbers kind of change on the second round was, was interesting to see that.
Yep.
We did something different where we got more, more input, more participation on this side of the county.
Yeah.
See, I was really, I think the Surf City, we only had what, two or three? So the high-population areas on the first round, it was not very much interest.
Anybody got anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to public comment, Ms. County Manager, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have ten.
Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairperson in the order in which the names appear on the sheet. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating their name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity, and the discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. Public comment will be limited to thirty minutes per the board's rule of procedure. Speakers will be allowed three minutes each to speak unless there are more than ten speakers. If there are more than ten speakers, the chairman will evenly divide the time up among the speakers.
The first speaker is our Parks and Rec Director, Zach White.
Okay. Mr. White, before you, before you speak, we have the World Series team here, right?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay. Board, I would ask that we suspend the rules for the three minutes so they can get their pictures and all this. Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the first public comment to exceed three minutes to extend to five.
I think.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you. So Commissioners, Zach White, Parks and Recreation Director, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Burgal-Deb softball team that are here with us tonight. This outstanding group recently claimed the North Carolina Dixie Softball State Championship title. On June twenty, or July twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, they're going to travel down to Ruston, Louisiana, to compete in the Dixie Softball World Series. While there, they'll not only be representing Burgal and Pender County, but also the state of North Carolina. So I'd like the board to please join me in congratulating these athletes on their success so far, and we wish them the best as they travel down to Louisiana.
Last year, your team went and you had a mixture of the whole county. Is this all, is this a mixture of the county again this year, or is this just Burgal-Dixie?
It's Pender County-Burgal.
Right. Okay. So it's all over Pender again? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And it amazes me that Dixie U still has the World Series in August in the hottest place in the world.
Congratulations, girls. I hope you do well. Next speaker, Ms. County Manager.
Next is Shannon Lloyd.
Hi, my name is Shannon Lloyd. I live at one-nine-six Court Lane, Hampstead, North Carolina. I feel like the ABC board should be redone, needs to be reevaluated. I feel it should consist of two county commissioners so that one can check the other when it comes to allocated products. There is no reason why board members are on the board until they die. They should be rotating out every two years. That doesn't mean put the same board members back there. The only ones that should push about five years is the Chair of the Board and maybe the General Manager. But if the Chair of the Board can't perform her duties to the point that she doesn't know what's going on in Pender County ABC, then she, along with the General Manager, then they should be replaced. When you have the same people in there year after year, you get tunnel vision and you don't see things for what they are. That's what you call the good old boy system. When you have the good old boy system, it only works for the good old boys and not people who actually care and want to make a difference or make it better and more proficient. That's the reason, and I would also like to know why I'm banned from every ABC in Pender County. I have not threatened anybody, I have not pursued anything, and the only time that I have said anything about an attorney is when they have banned me for no reason. I asked Susan Crawford, which is the General Manager, why was I banned? And she said, because I can. Who gives her that authority to ban somebody for just, I understand you can ban somebody for being drunk, you can ban somebody for disorderly conduct, you can ban somebody for being disrespectful. I have done none of those. I've worked there for five and a half years, and then they come up and they wanted to change me. They have been trying, every little thing, ever since I got a neck injury, which entailed Susan Crawford and Eddie McDoodle, warehouse manager, knowing all about that. They have all known, I have made it, I have made it abundantly clear, and I, so then I got moved to McSperry. During that time in McSperry, I had not really any problems with my neck, not having to have to go back to rehab or anything else, physical therapy or none of that. Then they wanted to come up and try to write me up after I get off five days vacation. I go back to work and they want to write me up and give me three write-ups for non-factual things. They did not want to discuss it, they wanted to stand there in the rain. She told me the reason I was banned is because I didn't give back the keys. There had been more than one person that have quit and no-call, no-show, and have taken the keys, and they haven't been banned. So at this point, that is called discrimination. So I will also like to know, and that in the part would be Susan Crawford, Diane Chadwick, that is the Chair of the Board, and Judy Smith, which is on the board, and along with the manager of Surf City ABC, that would be Mike Anderson, and the other person is Monica and Bowen, that was on, on my manager. So anyway, I would like this pettiness to quit, and I would like for this to be resolved.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Next is our Emergency Management Director, Tommy Batson.
Mr. Batson, thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Which way, Joseph? Joseph's helping me out here.
Go back to the beginning.
Okay, I'm sorry, Board. Other way?
Keep going. Beginning.
How many times I have to click it, Joseph? Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners and Public. Before you, it's item eight-point-seven on the agenda, and I want to give a brief update on this. The county in twenty, the little history about it, Pender County has three river gauges. We have one on the northeast Cape Fear River in Burgal, which we use every day of the week, and through many storms, it's ninety-nine. It was purchased during Carson Smith's days as EM Director. Twenty-eighteen, we purchased one for about twenty thousand dollars and placed it on the Black River, and twenty-sixteen, we put one on the Surf City Bridge. Flooding is an instrumental part of our job every day, and we deal with flooding on a yearly basis, two or three times sometimes, and as y'all see across the state, we've had many floodings, events this past couple of weeks, as well as Texas. County staff started, entered a contract in early this year with Green Streams, and that's a one-stop shop. They're going to come, install it, do traffic management. The only thing we have not completed is the DOT process, and we're asking for the board to extend this PO into the next budget year so simply as we can finish the permitting process for easements, encroachments on all the bridges. We're going to put five in, put one on Willard River Street in Mr. Tate's area up there because that place floods in twelve to thirty-six hours after every big, large rain event. It'll be the first road flooded that we see in our county. The northeast Cape Fear River and Croons Bridge, it normally floods twenty-four hours after the rain stopped coming from Duplin County. That is the first crest in our county. This way, we can judge the water coming downstream. The other place is Highway two-ten at the northeast Cape Fear River Bridge at Lanes Ferry. Daniel and his staff is getting ready to see twenty-six-hundred-and-ninety-five homes plus commercial lots. These are some of the direct impacts, as well as we've got a commercial facility, a thermal stray that could be impacted and has been impacted, and we're trying to stay ahead of the curve. We want these gauges here so we can do mass notification and work with the weather service. One at Shelter Creek, because the Maple Hill Road floods normally within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of a large rain event, and it comes in the northeast Cape Fear River, as well as the Beatty's Bridge. This is where the water enters coming from Fayetteville on the Black River. And there's a map right now of some of the, all the flood maps in Fiman across the state, which all these will go into flood mapping. They'll go into Fiman, and anybody that has internet access can use it. And this is what we're going to do over time, based on historical floods, what neighborhoods, what driveways, what businesses, and where the flooding happens, what's the situation, and when do we need to pull teams in? We need to do evacuations as well. It helps our commerce, our schools, our businesses as emergency responders. We're going to gather all this data, we're going to put it in, but we're just going to ask in this consent item, eight-point-seven, to have the PO extended over. It's already been paid for, we're working with DOT currently to get our encroachments permits, and they'll be stalled before the end of the year. There's everybody that's going to help, homeowners, citizens, travelers, flood mapping DOT, the schools, Stadio C, deploying resources ourself, as well as you all, and anybody can pick up the phone on our app and look at it, or just load to the internet. And that's all I had. I wanted to make it under three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Tommy.
And if there's any questions, I can sit down and talk to anybody after the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Louis Saunders. Okay, next is Frankie Saunders.
Hey, thank you guys for taking your time out and listening to me. I'm up here, I'm going to beat a horse to death because I don't feel like nobody's Because had they been listening to us, the constituents, this lawsuit that's taking place would not be taking place. And it's brought about because of you guys' decisions, three of you at least. Pender County people don't have that kind of money to be spending, much less on the taxes you guys are continuing to push to raise upon us. Now you're talking about lawsuit money that taxpayers' money is probably going to have to pay for. I don't know where y'all get off thinking that Pender County people have that kind of income. They don't, guys. And with this Pender EMS, you know what? That's going to raise our taxes. It's going to, it's going to, it's going to hurt a lot of people, and the service is going to be worse. The paper is another thing. It's going to raise people's, people can't afford to buy Wilmington paper. They don't live in Wilmington, they don't want to pay Wilmington paper, they want a local paper. They're not interested in any cartoon stuff and all that. Actually, listen, we didn't, we saw the cartoons, we thought they were cute. We didn't take them to heart like some. And had they not been pointed out and kept being talked about by certain ones, it wouldn't have been an issue. It would have went away, faded away. But somebody has to point it all out and drum on it. We need y'all's help to reconsider all what y'all have done on the Pender EMS and Fire and on the paper. We are begging y'all to turn this thing around and put it back like it was. People were happy. And I don't know what else is, I really felt like I'm beating a horse to death because I feel like I'm just beating on dead ears, not listening. We're just, Pender County people are begging y'all to turn it around and save all this mess. Thank you, I appreciate y'all's listening, whether you heard me or not.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jim Harris.
Mr. Harris.
My name is Jim Harris. Live at one-thirty-seven Cove Side Lane in Hampstead, just up the road. I just want to take a moment to ask, and in amplification of the prior speaker, to ask that you reconsider the Pender EMS Fire, call it a merger, call it a hostile takeover, whatever you will. I don't believe it's in the best interest of the citizens of this county to have the county own all of the EMS and Fire Service capabilities when, in fact, they have been proven to be more than satisfactory up until now. I would make a proposal to you that you establish the opportunity to have at least two, if not four, town halls, public meetings with at least three commissioners at each meeting so that they would be duly advertised and made available to all citizens, so that those meetings could be attended with the dispersment in advance of whatever merger agreement or business agreement you have reached with Pender EMS and Fire for a Q and A session during these town halls. I think you'll be enlightened to learn more about what our citizenship thinks about Pender County governance trying to usurp the ongoing performance and completion of their duties and their services to our citizens. Absent the public meetings, I would request that you reconsider the previous decision to do the merger, to execute the merger in the timeframe that was allotted or that was designated, and in fact, reinstate the Pender EMS and Fire service and capability and organization as an independent organization to y'all from that point forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Amy Schooly.
Maybe the third time's the charm. Hi, everybody, my name is Amy Schooly. I live at sixteen-oh-six Pender Lee Highway in Burgal, and I'm here as a concerned residence, resident, asking you to slow down at least the process of the proposed Fire and EMS merger. This is a major structural change to our emergency services with long-term financial, operational, and public safety impacts, and the public has had very little chance to ask questions or offer feedback. Yet, memoranda of understanding are already being finalized, and town halls aren't scheduled until after those decisions are made, and that is not true transparency. What's also confusing and concerning- What's also confusing and concerning is that not all areas in the county are included in the merger, and this creates inconsistencies in service, tax rates, and staffing, and the public deserves to understand why and how that will work. We've also heard reports that EMS and Fire staff are leaving their posts ahead of the transition because they don't wanna work for the county and for other reasons, certainly. And that puts at risk services right now, not just in the future. And while the plan may promise long-term efficiency, it does come at quite a cost. We're looking at one point eight million in new personnel costs each year at a time when the county has other urgent priorities. And as Commissioner Tate said, we don't have enough information to make a good decision, and I agree. So today, I respectfully ask that you hold public hearings this year with all the commissioners and financial officers present, that you delay hiring consultants or locking in plans until the public has had a real voice, and extend the timeline to allow for more research, input, and clarity. Let's make sure that this merger, if there is a merger, serves all of Pender County fairly, thoughtfully, and transparently. Thank you so much for your time and for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Connie Nelson.
Hi, my name is Connie Nelson. I live at seven oh six Highlands Drive in Hampstead. And I'm here also to talk about, again, Pender EMS and Fire, and I would definitely call it a hostile takeover. I'm not afraid to say that's what it is. I find it ironic that we're here now talking about this, or at least I am, after we see the project plan in front of us about this comprehensive land use arrangement. That's what a project plan looks like. First, you establish your goals. Then you survey the constituents or the stakeholders. Then you lay out the steps that need to happen. Then you create a schedule. You don't just plop a date down somewhere and say, "We're gonna do it by this." Be damned what the consequences are, and everybody here knows what the consequences are. We're gonna get raised taxes. This is not going to be free. It's going to be expensive. And for a period of time, at least, our services are gonna be degraded. So I'm asking also that we see a plan, get to hear about it, that we have some meetings and can provide feedback, and at least understand what's happening. I definitely feel like this is being shoved down our throat for reasons that we do not understand, because nobody is taking ten minutes to tell us why it needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Margaret Godwin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Margaret Godwin. I live at one oh five Marshview Road in Hampstead. I'm pretty much a lifetime resident of Hampstead. My parents moved up here when I was one years old. And considering the recent land use data that we've heard today, I sincerely request and hope that the Commissioner Board will more diligently uphold the Pender citizens' desires for conservation, protection, preservation of the large trees, the wetlands, marshes, and estuaries that are critical to what we all love about where we live. There are also a lot of traffic flow concerns, and I'm particularly worried about the upcoming... It hasn't come before the full planning board yet, but the potential development of the Piver Tract and how it will affect the creek between Old Point, the Piver Tract, and Eagles Watch. So I certainly hope you'll take that into consideration as things come before the board. Thank you.
That's it.
Commissioners, you've had time to review the consent agenda. If there are no amendments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the addition of eight point two-four MOU for SROs at Surf City School.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Eight point one.
Nine point one.
Nine point one, I'm sorry, as it was.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Springer and the Board of Commissioners. I would like to respectfully ask that the Board consider approving the twenty twenty-five Pender County Personnel Policies that were tabled during the June sixteenth board meeting. I've worked with the interim Director Meg Blue to incorporate the Board's request from the previous board meeting into the updated book and have received only one other request. The proposed policies have been communicated with employees, and they seem very excited about all of our changes, our proposed changes. I would also respectfully ask that, should you elect to adopt the personnel policies tonight, that they be effective July first, twenty twenty-five, so eighteen employees eligible for the revised longevity policy would be awarded their bonuses. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right, Boards, anybody get any questions?
I don't have any questions, but it's a very comprehensive plan. It's a lot of review into it. I'm about a third away, finished the review. I don't know about the other Commissioners, but it's still a reviewing that and still have questions in the process of it, as well as more clarity in the process. And just not comfortable voting on it tonight without having given it that methodical review that I think it deserves.
Yes, sir.
Just me as one Commissioner.
What would you like to do, Commissioner Tate?
I really would like to bring it back to the next meeting and have an opportunity to meet with Ms. Bram and Attorney Thurman about my questions regarding that plan.
Yes, sir.
Ms. County Manager, do we have any dates we can... I think this would be an appropriate time to figure out, maybe want to enter a later date for a special call meeting?
We can certainly figure that out. There are a number of other things that weren't able to make this agenda that we really need to consider as well before we waiting till August.
Okay, so can we add that to that agenda?
Sure.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Ms. Bram?
Yes, sir, whatever the Board desires.
So is there a motion on the table to table the nine point one item?
I'll make that certain.
Motion to table, we got a second?
I'll second, but can we get a date certain? Do you have...
I don't have one right this second, but I can get you one, and we can put it out.
Okay. And the next meeting is fine to me. The next meeting, I think in the next week I can review it.
What is the next?
The next meeting is August fourth.
August fourth.
So can we do it the twenty-eighth? Would that be permissible? Or the twenty-first?
I can't do the twenty-first.
Okay.
But we're not having a special call meeting just with this item on?
No, no, no. There's several other items.
We can do whatever date works for you all.
I'm good with the twenty-eighth. It may have to be partly virtual, if that's possible. Or we can wait till the fourth.
Mr. Attorney, it's legal to have an electronic meeting, correct?
There's certain things you can't do. It is unclear. There was a meeting that was held electronically for the purpose of a quorum, and the Court of Appeals ruled that that was improper. The Supreme Court allowed that decision to stand, but said that the Court of Appeals' opinion should not be considered a precedent. So that's a little confusing answer. I apologize, but that's the state of the law, is we don't know exactly whether... Because it would be a violation of the public meetings law to have a meeting electronically which was not open to the public. That's clear, but the courts also haven't said whether to establish a proper meeting, I guess is the way to phrase it, you have to be there in person. And so I'm not trying to not give you an answer, but that is just the state of the law, is it was deemed not to be a quorum, but then the Supreme Court said, "But that's not precedential for future cases." So nobody knows the answer at this point, is what I'm saying.
So with that interpretation, can I, would like to just put it on August fourth. That way I have that block. I know that I can do that. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Is that...
That's fine.
Mr. Groves? Well, I have a statement. Ms. Pam, how long you been working on this? Quite a while.
Yes, sir.
And everything's a plus. There's a lot of improvements.
Yes, sir.
And so my wishes are for us to vote on it tonight, and that's my wishes.
Right now, Commissioner Groves, there's a motion on the table for it to be tabled.
I'll just give you my opinion.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I'll second the table until August fourth date certain, but not past August fourth.
Can I make a suggestion, because we have some things that need to be done prior to then for the County Manager to figure a date out here within the next forty-eight hours to advise the Board?
Yes, I will, I'll get you a list of the things that may need to be considered at that meeting and a certain date, and we will advertise it within forty-eight hours of today.
Okay.
If it's, if it works for the Board.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're having a call meeting for other items that's not on the agenda today?
Because of the timing of this meeting and the deadline for this meeting and the timing of the budget approval, there are a lot of things that weren't able to make this agenda. And we only have one meeting in July typically, and so I'm suggesting that we consider having a special meeting for those things in order for things to consider going forward. The deadline for this meeting was June sixteenth, so that was a month ago, almost, and that was before the budget was approved. Is the only reason I ask that.
All right, got a motion, got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three one.
Thank you.
Nine point two.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here asking for approval for the installation of the security cameras at all the convenience sites.
All right, any discussion on nine point two?
I'm making a motion to approve nine point two, the installation of surveillance cameras at all Pender County trash, recycling, convenience centers.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point three.
Commissioners, I am here before you tonight to let the Board know that we received two separate grants from the United States Tennis Association for the tennis courts at Hampstead Kiwanis Park Phase Four in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. So I'm here tonight to request that we accept these funds and that we approve the attached budget ordinance amendment that goes along with these grants. No real strings attached to these. It'll kinda, you know, work in good with that project budget that's established. And Ms. Blue can help answer any questions that you may have.
I'm making a motion to, if you accept my motion, I'm making a motion to approve, accept thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars from the United States Tennis Association.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Mr. Terry, nine point four, all the way to nine point eight.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and County Commissioners. Tonight, I have before you a couple of different items that were approved in the FY twenty-six budget as part of our operating capital for replacing vehicles in addition to new equipment. And for nine point four is the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Chevrolet sixty-five hundred specialized mechanic body with a heavy-duty crane for the newly created centralized maintenance division. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for this vehicle, searched all over different states. Come to find out that this truck is on the ground in Wendell, North Carolina, which is one of our state contract vehicles through the state purchasing program, and it actually came in at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which is fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars in savings. So tonight, for nine point four, I'm asking for approval for this purchase of the centralized maintenance vehicle.
Chairman, I'll for motion for approval.
Got a motion to approve. You got a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? Two, two, motion will die.
Moving right along to nine point five, which is the approval to purchase one twenty twenty-four Ford F-150 truck from Capital Ford, which is at a cost of forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. As part of the restructuring within the Utilities Department this year, the existing crane truck is being reallocated to the centralized maintenance division, which is what we need to replace that vehicle with. We originally budgeted forty-eight thousand dollars for this F-150, and it came in at forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. And Capital Ford is also a state contract vendor when we sent out for the quotes and stuff, which results in a five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollar savings to the utility budget. So tonight, I'm seeking approval for nine point five.
All right, Board, what are the wishes for nine point five?
Making a motion to approve nine point five?
Got a motion. Need a second?
So the use of this truck is for the foreman to go do the locates and the, and work orders, turnoffs, turn-ons, installation of meters, carry parts, check the lift stations, carry hoses. Well, so that was, Dr. Tate, the crane truck is what they were utilizing to begin with, and it's being reallocated to the centralized maintenance division. So that truck is going out there. Instead of buying another vehicle, it would actually replace that vehicle, is what it's for. I'm sorry. No, it's coming out of Enterprise Fund, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's coming out of Enterprise.
So is it necessary, Mr. Terry, to have a truck if they're doing connects and reconnects?
Yes, sir. We carry a lot of tools in the back of our vehicles where we could blow off water lines and stuff. So there's a lot of shovels, turn-on wrenches, turn-off wrenches that just won't fit in the back of a smaller cab vehicle.
Okay. Any further discussion? Nine point five, is there a motion? You made a motion, okay. Got a motion for nine point five. Do we have a second? There is no second. Nine point six.
All right, thank you. So nine point six is the approval, which was budgeted in the FY twenty-six Enterprise Fund, and that's for a Kubota KX eighty excavator from Nash Equipment. The problem with utilities is everything was contracted out beforehand. Uh, the problem with utilities is everything was contracted out beforehand. Uh, a couple of years ago, they were allocating three and four million dollars a year to, uh, have vendors come in, uh, and contract services to fix and repair and make taps on the water lines and stuff. Uh, this is a bigger machine for us, which would give us the capability to dig deeper for the water lines. If you'll remember, back on Highway one seventeen, across from Paul's place, there was a leak. Uh, we couldn't get down to it with the current existing machine. Uh, so this KX-80 excavator will allow us to respond quicker and not have to call a contractor in at one o'clock in the morning, which could take additional time for us in response to water main breaks. So tonight I'm seeking approval for nine point six to purchase this KD, uh, AX-80 excavator from Nash Equipment.
You didn't need that sixty-five-hundred to pull it with, did you?
Huh?
Did you need the sixty-five-hundred?
No, sir. The sixty-five-hundred is what's going to be utilized in the centralized maintenance division.
Okay, that's right, you did say that.
All right, any further discussion on, uh, nine point six? I'll entertain a motion for nine point six.
I'll make a motion. Seems like they need this in order to get the water lines restored properly. Plan to make that motion?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Three, one, motion will carry.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is nine point seven, which is approval to purchase three twenty-twenty-four Dodge Ram twenty-five-hundred diesel trucks from Westgate Chevrolet in Burgal. Uh, these, uh, three trucks, two of them are replacement vehicles based on the replacement policy, and one of them is for one of the new positions that we have. And when we searched for these vehicles, we sent out for six different quotes from all over the state, looked at the state contract pricing and stuff, and it comes with a cheaper cost of Westgate being the lowest of the bids. And this also, I want to include that it does have two years of oil changes and maintenance for these trucks at Westgate. And it's also, uh, allocating funds back into the county for one of our vendors. So tonight I'm seeking approval for nine point seven, uh, for purchasing three twenty-twenty-four Dodge Ram vehicles.
These still seem very expensive.
They are expensive, but they are the lowest bidder when it comes to diesel trucks, uh, for super duty. The problem is, utilities in the past, uh, has gone with gas vehicles, uh, and what has happened is they've had the smallest and they broke down very easily. We, we have a two-fifty right now, a gas truck. It can barely haul itself, uh, because they've hauled machines and stuff with it, and the springs have been broke on it. Uh, so, these trucks right here will help haul of our, our equipment with the VAC trailers and some of the smaller machines and, uh, dump trailers that we use.
So when you said maintenance and oil changes, that's probably twelve or thirteen hundred dollars per truck per year, I would assume, and just, so, over two years, that's twenty-six hundred dollars, so that knocks the price of that truck down to what, forty, about forty-eight, forty-nine?
So, no, that was included in this price when I reached out to Westgate.
Right, but if we were, if we were providing it, correct? If, that's what I'm saying, if we're providing those services, we're going to have to pay for them.
Correct.
If they're providing them, we're saving about twelve hundred dollars a year, give or take mileage.
Correct.
Times two is twenty-four hundred dollars per truck. So it knocks the price of the truck down essentially, uh, to around fifty, or fifty, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
Correct.
Our forty guys there?
Yes.
Does that sound close?
And so when, when we quoted for these vehicles, they included that in the price. I asked them to drop that price off of the vehicles, but the owner said, no, it has to be included on the vehicles, and given with the current status of the mechanics and stuff, uh, that don't have time to actually perform the services that we need, uh, this will help them recuperate as well, too.
Don't say that, because we're getting ready to bring on about two hundred extra additional vehicles next year. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve nine point seven.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
One question, if you don't mind me asking a question, Mr. George. Um, what, it's got a, you got three twenty-twenty-four twenty-five-hundreds, is, is there any way we can drop two of those back to a fifteen-hundred and the price come down?
I can search, certainly reach, research that, but I believe it was the board's wishes to go to diesel trucks, um, from the comments that I heard prior.
Okay.
And giving that, the fact of, you know, the fifteen-hundreds, they're, you know, not much difference, but I do agree, I can research that for you if you would like me to.
And I agree with Mr. Terry. I, I don't remember saying that, but I agree that with the type of work that these trucks are being used for, a diesel makes more sense for the, the wear and tear on the vehicle, especially if you're, you're pulling trailers and hauling heavy stuff.
And we-
Transmissions in a fifteen-hundred don't like to pull a whole lot of heavy stuff anymore, and they constantly derate the fifteen-hundred engines to, with all this electronics and active fuel management, the gas, on gas, so there's a lot of issues with having a, my opinion, this is just my opinion, I'm not a, a car salesman or trying to sell a car, but for the kind of work we're doing, it seems more efficient in the long run to, to have the diesel just for the durability.
Right. And, and we budgeted a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for these three vehicles at fifty-eight thousand dollars a piece, and with these trucks, it was essentially a savings of forty-one hundred dollars a piece, so it saved about twelve, almost thirteen thousand dollars by going with Westgate. And when we looked at the other places around, even the state contract, and that's something I wanted to mention, too, the state contract was not the cheapest. So Capital Ford, when they sent the quote, they were not the cheapest. It was actually Westgate that was the cheapest.
All right, we have a motion for nine point seven. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a second. All right, motion dies at nine point eight.
All righty. And the last one is the, uh, replacement dump truck for the utilities division, uh, from Hendrick's Dodge in Wilmington at a cost of eighty-two thousand dollars, uh, which is one of the older dump trucks that we have, uh, single axle, it's always been utilized in the utilities department, and it's, it's been beat up, it's had the front end replaced numerous times, uh, so this one is a more efficient one that will pull our VAC trailer as well, too, and will allow us to get inside of the smaller subdivisions. So tonight I'm requesting the board approval to replace the dump truck at a cost of eighty-two thousand five hundred and four dollars from, uh, the Chrysler Dodge in Wilmington.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
Did we not buy a dump truck and an excavator last year?
We bought a smaller excavator for smaller jobs, and we bought a bigger trump, dump truck that replaced an existing, uh, nineteen-eighty-nine Freightliner that was a replacement. And this one is replacing the, the other dump truck.
Plus the same voice as that's done, so this is working, is operable?
Uh, barely operable. Um, it's, it's been beat up, it's been hit, uh, the front end right now needs to be replacement, uh, replaced. Uh, when talking with the fleet director, uh, they're going to dispose of it. Uh, it's, it's not even worth fixing at this point.
Any further discussion on nine point eight?
I do respect Mr. Terry's, uh, demeanor and willingness to go back and look at these items, and I think the ones that we voted no on, uh, with the understanding that you would go back and rebid and research that, so you may come back before this governing body, and it may be a different answer.
Correct.
Someone make a motion to approve nine point eight.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
And this one's on the ground right now as well, too. When it comes to dump trucks, they're a little difficult to get at this point.
Motion's on the floor. Is there a second? Right, motion dies.
All right, thank you.
All right, we've, uh, moved to number ten with discussion. Does anybody, any board members have anything to discuss? All right, moving on to appointments. Appointments to the Veterans Commission, eleven point one. Ms. Blue.
I'm going to let our volunteer clerk take these.
Good evening, sirs. Um, the first one is for the appointment of veterans' commissions. The veterans' commission was established on May fifth, twenty-five by resolution of the Board of Commissioners meeting. The commissioners consent, excuse me, consists of four at-large members that must reside in Pender County and are a veteran. The terms for the applicants will need to be sl- staggered. The county manager's office requests the board consider appointing three applicants for two years and three applicants for three years. The two term will be June first, twenty-five, and expire on May thirty-first of twenty-seven. The three-year terms will begin June first, twenty-five, and expire on May thirty-first of twenty-eight. The openings have been advertised with a refund and will be continued to do so until the vacancies are filled. The first candidate is James Moody. He resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for ten years. Moody served in the Army from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve as a medic. After his time serving, he worked on a personal security specialist, medic, and a member of emergency response teams. He is a member of the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association. Next is James Hill. He resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for six years. Hill served in the Army from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand seventeen as an information operations officer. In the Army, he'll achieve the rank of E-seven Sergeant First Class and retired as an O-three Captain. He is currently employed at Caldwell Banker Seacoast Advantage as a Realtor. He began Legion Post five fifty-two two years ago and serves as the adj- adjunct for both VFW nine-nine-eight-three and American Legion Post five-five-two. Bradley Fisher resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for ten years. Fisher served in the Army from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen sixty-eight, retiring as a Sergeant E-five. He is currently retired but worked as a production manager for Wise Die Casting. Fisher is the American Legion Post one sixty-seven commander. Then we have James, excuse me, Jason Simas, resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for seven years. He served in the Air Force from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand thirteen and retired as an E-seven Master Sergeant. Post Air Force, Simas is the owner of Shuck and Shack Oyster Bar. He is very active within the veterans' community, serving in the Air Force Sergeants Association, Semper Fi, and America's Fund, Honor Flight Cape Fear, American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Affairs, and Loyal Order of Moose. Then we have Daniel Fuller, who resides in Burgal and has been a resident of Pender County for thirteen years. Fuller served in the Air Force from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-four, retiring as an E-five sergeant. He is currently employed as the Assistant Police Chief for the Burgal Police Department. He is active within the community, serving in Rotary International, Rotary Club of Burgal, and the Pender County Veterans Coalition. Kenneth Ramsey resides in Burgal and has been a resident for over forty years. He served in the Navy from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand twelve, retiring as a Chief Petty Officer E-seven. He is retired now, but has an employment history with the California Highway Patrol and Atkinson Police Department. He serves in the VFW and SCV. Lee Voice resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for five years. He served in the Marines from two thousand to two thousand twenty-four, retiring a major. He is now employed at Live Oak Bank as a risk analyst. Excuse me. Voice is very active within the community, serving as the Chair of Live Oak Bank Veterans Employees Resource Group, a member of the Community Veterans Engagement Board, a TSH volunteer, and a member of his local HOA. Matthew Hornisek resides in Curry and has been a resident of Pender County for one year. He served in the Marines from two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one, retiring as an E-seven Post Marines. Hornisek is a shift supervisor of GE Vernova. This would be his first membership with an organization. Michael Beams resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for one year. He served in the Marines from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand twenty-four and retired as a Lieutenant Colonel. This would be Beams' first membership as an organization, with an organization. He attended the U.S. Army Command General Staff College in two thousand twelve. Robert Corbett resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for forty-four years. Corbett served in the U.S. Coast Guard from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two and retired as an E-eight Senior Chief Petty Officer. He is currently employed by Lori's Ace Home and Hardware as a Sales Associate. Corbett is very active in the community, serving in the American Legion Post one sixty-seven, Operation Military Kids Club, Surf City Volunteer Fire Department, and the Burgal Fire Department. Carol Mullin resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for nine years. Mullin served in the U.S. Coast Guard from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand twenty-one, retiring with the rank of E-nine. Mullin is currently employed by Live Oak Bank as a Training Specialist. Merlin currently serves in the Live Oak Bank's Veterans Affinity Group and the Veterans Business Collective. Sam Gudry resides in Burgal and has been a resident of Pender County for five years. He served in the Navy from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand six, retiring as a Lieutenant Commander. Gudry now owns his own business and works as an architect for Gudry Coastal Architect, Inc. He is very active within the community, serving on the Burgal Planning Board, American Institute of Building Design Cape Fear, and the American Legion. Dorian Cremarti resides in Curry and has been a resident of Pender County for two years. He served in the Army from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen, retiring as an SPC. He is currently employed by NCAFL CIO as their unit organizer. He is very active within the community, serving as a Silver Life member of both the National Association of Black Veterans and the NAACP, Eighty-second Airborne Member, and a member of the NCFPSC. Justin May resides in Surf City and has been a resident of Pender County for four years. He served in the Marines from two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one and was ranked Major at Discharge. He is currently employed by Apollo Led Flight as a HEMS pilot. May is very active within the community, serving on the Civil Air Patrol, Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter two ninety-seven, support of Girl Scouts, and Little League Baseball Coach. David Everett resides in Atkinson and has been a resident of Pender County for seven years. He served in the Navy from nineteen eighty-one to two thousand nine. He was discharged as an O-five commander. He is currently retired, but is very active in the community. He serves on the Pender County Historical Society, North Carolina Military Historical Society, Sons of the American Revolution, Morse Creek Battlefield Association, and Friends of Fort Fisher. David Waters resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for nine years. He served in the Coast Guard from nineteen sixty-seven to two thousand eight and was ranked CW-four at his time of discharge. Waters is very active within the community, serving as the President of the National EMS Pilots Association and serving in the Hawaii Lions Club, Vietnam Helicopter Pilots Association, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Army AAAA. Tony Singh resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for three years. He served in the Air Force from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen eighty-nine and was discharged as an E-four sergeant. To Singh is very active within the community, serving on the Facility Senate and Retention Committee and the Graduate Facility Committee for East Carolina University, Admissions and Faculty Committee for Frontier Nursing University, and on the doctoral committee of the University of North Carolina Wilmington. And the connection is to consider the application for six applicants.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How many?
I don't think I've ever seen that many applicants for a committee, and it's a shame that there's not room for all of them.
How many seats are open, ma'am? Okay.
And the item suggests staggering them, doing three for two years and three for three years. So you would need to decide who would be with, or maybe you accept their applications and let them decide that? I don't know how that part works, but...
Do we have order as they came in?
I, we can probably get that, but I don't have that currently. I think they're...
I think we extended the time Commissioner Gross for people to allow more people...
I think it's been several iterations of advertising it.
I'll start with my first, and I guess maybe we can all take one and then come back with the last two. Is that appropriate, we all?
Sure.
So I'm gonna pick Jason Sims from Hampstead.
I'm gonna pick Mr. Everett from Atkinson.
And we still have to vote on these, correct?
Yeah.
Do we want to do them one at a time and vote as we go, or how do you want?
I'd just rather combine the votes. Sims is used...
Sims was mine.
Commissioner Gross, can you tell me again? Everett, okay. Dr. Tate?
Mine are Justin May, Dorian Cromar, I'm sorry, Justin May and Kenneth Ramsey and Sam Gudry.
Okay, so I have Mr. Sims, Mr. Everett, Mr. May, Mr. Gudry, and Mr. Ramsey. Is there a motion on the floor?
Take a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh yeah, need one more.
I'd like to do, did you get, I mean?
Cromarty was the one that was mentioned last.
So we have, we have five, right?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Cromarty was, was number six. Do you want to change that, or?
No, that's, I mean, that's fine. I thought we were doing...
Okay, okay.
I'd be glad to make that motion.
Okay, got a motion on the floor.
I would say that Sam Gudry, Justin May, served his three-year terms. I'm, Kenneth Ramsey.
So I have Mr. Gudry and Mr. Ramsey as three-year terms. The remaining will go to two years? Two years, okay. I'm glad the...
Gudry, Ramsey, and May, three-year terms.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor for the six nominations. Mr. Cromarty, Mr. Ramsey, Mr. Gudry, Mr. May, Mr. Everett, Mr. Sims. Mr. Sims been two years, Mr. Everett been two years, Mr. Cromarty been two years, Mr. Ramsey, Mr. Gudry, Mr. May remain at the three-year term. We have, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye. Unanimous vote. All right. Ms. Blue, eleven point two.
You ready? Okay. Okay, the next is for the Pender County Housing Initiative. The Kinder County Board of Commissioners reactivated the Pender Housing Initiative by resolution at a regular meeting. The Housing Director and Clerk worked closely together to bring in applicants. The initiative consists of nine members, three county employees, three individuals from low-income neighborhoods, elected representatives of low-income neighborhoods, and/or other low-income community residents, and then three individuals from the private sector. There is not a lot of living requirement for employee or private sector positions. Currently, there are three low-income positions open, two private sector positions open, and two employee positions open. The opening have been advertised with a deadline and will continue to do so until the vacancies are filled. The terms for the applicants below would begin on June first, twenty twenty-five, and expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Chardonnay Langley has applied for the low-income neighborhood position for the Pender Housing Initiative. She resides in Burgal and has been a resident of Pender County for nine years. Langley has not served in any organizations as of date but feels she could be an asset by providing perspective from a lower-income standpoint and as an advocate for others with financial issues that depend on affordable housing within the county. Lucretia Keith has applied for the private sector position on the Pender Housing Initiative. She resides in Willard and has been a resident of Pender County for thirty-nine years. She is currently employed by New Hanover County as the Program Manager and DSS Worker. She is the President of the Pender County Branch of the NAACP and a Charter Member of the National Council of Negro Women. She would like to serve on the Board to continue to advocate for the community she serves. Charles Stanfield has applied for the private sector position of the Pender County Housing Initiative. He resides in Wilmington and has been a resident for twenty-seven years. Although he does not live in Pender County, he is employed by the Farm Bureau, Pender County Branch, as an insurance agent. Stanfield believes he could be an asset to the Initiative Board because he can provide insight on current and future housing opportunities from an insurance and liability standpoint for the county PHI and Housing Department. Justin May has applied for the private sector position in the Pender Housing Initiative. He resides in Surf City and has been a resident of Pender County for four years. He served in the Marines from two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one and was ranked Major at Discharge. He is currently employed by Apollo Med Flight as a HEMS pilot. May is very active within the community, serving on the Civil Air Patrol, Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter Two-Ninety-seven, Support of Girl Scouts, and Little League Baseball Coach. May believes he would be an asset to the PHI because of his commitment to rural development, leadership, and strategic planning experience, and would be able to provide, to bridge public and private intersections. So we're looking for six.
Six total. How many do we have?
I believe that they...
There's two privates, I'm sorry.
I believe that they all fill a vacancy, the way that they're listed.
We just have to waive the, says on the, whatever it's called up here, there's three positions, three low-income positions open and two private sector.
That's where I was trying to find, yes.
But we have three private sector listed as private sector applicants and one public company. Is that, I know other boards where we don't have, that doesn't meet the, yeah, we just...
Keep advertising as one.
Yeah, we, we've had in the past...
You can make an exception, I believe, is what you're trying to say, that you can put all of them on the board until someone can fill that spot.
All right, what are the wishes of the board?
We have four applicants in seven positions, six positions, so I, I'm fine with all of them being appointed.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, and there's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposing? All right.
Okay, moving along to the Beautification Committee. The Pender County Board of Commissioners approved the Beautification Committee on May fifth, twenty twenty-five, by resolution at the regular meeting. The committee consists of seven at-large members of Pender County and works to create, emphasize, volunteer opportunities within the county. There are currently five openings on the committee. The openings have been advertised with a deadline and will continue to do so until the vacancies are filled. The manager's office requests the board consider the applicants below. Their terms would begin June first of twenty twenty-five and expire on May thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight. Fred Skipper resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for twenty-three years. He is currently a Building Inspector and a Fire Inspector for the town of Holly Ridge and worked for the town of Surf City prior. He currently serves on the Blues Society of the Lower Cape Fear Board of Directors. Skipper feels qualified for this committee because he has eleven years of local government experience, nonprofit experience, is a native of the state, and has applicable experience from his line of work. Heidi Mysik resides in Hampstead and has been a resident of Pender County for thirteen years. She is currently a stay-at-home mom but worked at Emerge Ortho as a surgeon, surgery scheduler, and handled insurance. She is active on the PTA Board for Topsail Elementary and the PTO American Leadership Academy. Mysik would like to serve on the committee because she believes she has an eye for beautiful things. So we have five vacancies and two applicants.
wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 I have a question. Where are we advertising these, the committee?
They're advertised on our website and our, all of our social media.
So the people in Western Pender County that have internet, how do they find out about them? Because there's still quite a few people that don't have...
Well, we have them posted in, I believe, in the county manager's office as well, but if not, they will be.
Eleven point four. How many, how many positions do we have open on this one, ma'am?
On the beautification?
On the eleven point four, Fire Commission.
The fire. What does it say? Two.
Two at large.
Two at large.
Okay.
Two at large vacancies. These seats have been advertised with a deadline and will continue to be advertised until filled. The term of the seats are February first, twenty twenty-five, through January first of twenty twenty-eight. The applicants are, first is Herbert Richardson. He resides in Rocky Point, has been a resident for seventy-six years. He is currently retired but has the service manager for Bill Carone Ford. Richardson served as the Chief of the Rocky Point Fire, Volunteer Fire Department for fifteen years. He has served on the Planning Board and the Twenty-Fifty Steering Committee. Jenny Grafford resides in Burgal and has been a resident of Pender County for three years. Grafford is the owner of Ocean Breeze Accounting. Grafford is not a part of any organization and has not volunteered or worked with any EMS or fire operations before. Grafford cited that they are a small business owner who consults other businesses on finance and operations and feels this could help with the upcoming merger. Sherri Reeves resides in Hampstead and has been a resident for fourteen years. Reeves is retired but worked at Novant Health as the Director of IT Applications and the New Hanover Regional Medical Center before that. Reeves was the Accounting Chair of the New Hanover County Relay for Life from two thousand eight to two thousand eleven and the Treasurer for Chris Mills from North Carolina House in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, and two thousand sixteen. Reeves feels that with her business management and mergers and acquisitions experience, she can provide knowledge and experience that will help with the support of the fire departments across the county. Timothy Jasper resides in Burgal and has been a resident of Pender County for forty-five years. He currently works at Hood Container but was previously employed by the Town of Burgal Fire Department as an apparatus operator. He is a member of the King Solomon Lodge, number one thirty-eight. Jasper believes he's, his experience serving as the Deputy Chief of Burgal has provided him with knowledge and experience that would be beneficial to the Fire Commission. Ashley Morrison resides in Willard and has been a resident for forty-seven years. Morrison currently works with Alkemi, Inc. as the Manufacturing Supervisor, where they oversee the daily operations of a pharmaceutical manufacturing facility. Prior to this, they were with a fitness center manager for River Landing Country Club. Morrison is currently the Pender, Pender Lee Fire Department Captain and has served on the, and then it stops.
On the Pender Lee Fire Department Board of Directors.
Thank you. So there's two, and you have five. Need two, now we have five.
I asked for Herbert Richardson.
I would like Sherri Reeves and Timothy Jasper.
Who did you say with Pender Lee Fire Department?
Ashley, why is it, asterisk, it was all the stars beside her name. It was something...
That's what I was... I believe that one came in after the fact, but I'm not sure if I've got the...
Or was it, she was looking for another committee? I can't remember. I remember there was something Lexi said, but... Ashley Morrison, I'm sorry, Dr. Tate.
We need two, we have three.
Mr. Tate?
No, certainly not Miss Morrison.
Okay.
I would hope that we would consider Herbert Richardson. He started the Rocky Point Volunteer Fire Department.
I know, got four.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to go one at a time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion for Herbert Richardson.
All right, motion's on the table. We gotta get a second. Motion dies. Ms. Grafford. Jenny?
Do I do each one or are we going to do the nomination?
Uh, we can do the nomination. Uh, Sherri, let's go Sherri Reeves. Ms. Reeves.
I'll make a motion for Sherri Reeves.
Okay, motion on the floor for Ms. Reeves?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Jasper?
Okay.
So Sherri Reeves, were you opposed to Sherri Reeves?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, my, my fault, uh, Mr. Gross.
I'll make a motion for Timothy Jasper.
Motion for Mr. Jasper. We gotta get a second. No second, motion dies. Ms. Morrison?
There's only two seats available, is that right? I'll make a motion for Ms. Morrison.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Two, motion dies. So you have, Ms. Reeves. Eleven point five. Ms. Blue.
The summary says Vice Chairman Springer resigned from the Pender West Empire Board of Directors at the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners regular meeting. The county manager's office presents the option of reappointment to the Board.
Any further discussion?
I would like to return that to a citizen seat as...
Okay. Is that a motion?
It's, that would be a motion, yes.
Okay.
No, second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All oppose? Three, one. Take applications back, Ms. Blue, for...
We will advertise it and bring applications back, yes.
Do we need to open up the districts, Mr. Cologne?
Mr. So, would you please open the districts?
Go Rocky Point up, Sol.
Okay, it's open. Or, we gotta make a, make a motion to open the districts.
I think you just have to gavel in.
Okay.
Correct?
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I'm over here asking for an acceptance of the deed of dedication of the Water Distribution System for the Brookfield Branch subdivision. This is a new subdivision that has been built on Hoover Road in District One. Logan's Homes is the developer and contractor. The first phase is total eighty-five homes. The whole build-out will be three hundred homes. At this point, the water line is ready to be put into service and the dedication is to bring the, give the water line to the utilities so the utilities would take over the line.
I'm making a motion to approve the resolution setting the deed of dedication of the Water Distribution System for Brookfield Branch, Phase One, Section One.
Motion's on the floor. I get a second.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Make a motion to close the, um, Rocky Point Water and Store District, Rocky Tops, whatever it's called now.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, thirteen point one. Okay, okay. Fourteen, let's see. Ms. Moser. Don't have anything. Okay. For Social Services either. Okay. Item from County, County Attorney.
Um, yes, sir. We have a number of items for the session. Uh, item three, Attorney Client. Item four, Economic Development. Uh, item five, Potential Acquisition of Real Property. And item six, Personal.
Okay. Ms. County Manager.
Um, just wanted to clarify that we will be sending out a draft agenda for you all to look at for a potential special meeting with a date in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we will send that out within forty-eight hours of today's meeting. Um, it will be extremely helpful for continuing operations to be able to get some of those things approved so that our departments can function accordingly.
Commissioner Tate, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Commissioner George?
I do. I just want to take a couple of seconds and, and thank everyone that offered their support. Um, as most of, if you don't know, my mother passed away, um, Saturday was a week ago. So I appreciate, I've had several calls, texts, cards, and it really means a lot to know that you have the, the backing of the citizens and, and the staff. And I would like to take opportunity to apologize that I wasn't able to attend the, um, the budget meeting, um, that we had scheduled. And it was because I was spending my time with her. So once again, thank y'all, prayers, help. Um, just the thought of knowing people out there that's been through it that offered comfort and support. Um, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank Commissioner George and, uh, apologize to hear about the loss of your brother. Commissioner Gross, you got anything?
Yeah, just a few things. Um, I'm a member of Cape Fear Rural Planning, and what we do is we put DOT jobs up or down. And, um, I did get the, um, East End, Alanya Ferry Bridge, get, I got that fixed. A gentleman lost his boat and, um, and that big dip. I know y'all enjoying coming off of that bridge now. I know I am. And, um, and working on the light at Ashton Crossroads. Um, the last update on that was about fourteen months. And, um, there's lots of things out there that need fixing, but if they don't know, they don't go out and look. Um, you can send it to our manager or get it with me. Um, a lot of things are going on right now. Um, this one lady talked about limits on different boards. I, I agree with her on any board. I am a term limit person also. And, um, I wish she was here, not that we can control that board that she's complaining about. But, um, anyway, y'all know I've been pushing for water for all. We've got people all over this county that haven't got water, and I don't see any plans for them to get water. And, and the ones that do have lines, they can't afford a tap fee. They just can't afford six thousand dollars to cut into the line. So, uh, I'm one commissioner, I'm one vote. I can't vote to help these people, but all these members up here can. And I hope that one day we'll not be so divided and work together for one good. Um, I pray for that day. Um, a lot of people's called me about the budget. I voted against the budget, and I'll tell you why. At the end of it, we added a hundred and fifty thousand for whatever, but yet the sheriff didn't get what he asked for. Um, safety should be first, especially law enforcement. So that's why I voted against the budget. And, um, I want to say a little bit about the fire and EMS. The county manager was fired. The county attorney was fired. The assistant county manager left. The clerk has left. And I want you to look at the timing when all that happened. Go back and look at the timing. I'm one person. And most of that happened to derail the fire and EMS merger. That's why, that's why it was hap, that's why it happened. So, fact is, we probably don't have enough help in that office to do this merger. And I will be assessing that in the few weeks to come. That's all I have.
Thank Commissioner Gross. Um, Ms. Blue, do we have any specified dates, uh, for town, town halls? Are they?
Regarding the merger?
Yep.
Um, not at this time, but there are plans for them, yes.
Okay.
I think the plan, or Ms. Fulton, I think the plan was way in the spring, right before April, May, after everything was already, um, pushed through. I mean, what brought this all to a head on, on March tenth of this year was their request to have the public hearings. That was Pendleton MS Fire's request to have at least two, and that's why I pushed the, the ones over the edge that weren't supportive of that. So, Ms. Fulton here today?
She is.
I'm, I'm at the state of the words.
Good word, amazed, the public hearings.
Is there a reason why it's too, is there a reason why they're pushed out so far?
So some of them are so that we can explain benefits to employees or potential employees. Um, and then it, it's entirely possible that we have some in the fall in order to go along with the finalized, um, agreement. The MOU for now is just to make sure that we memorialize the factors that are important to each of the parties so that we're all on the same page about what we're trying to achieve. And then we will have between, when the MOU is adopted and when the final agreement is proposed, which I believe the deadline for that is December at this point, um, we're, we're happy to do public engagement if that's what the board wishes. Um, and we can get input at that time. Uh, we just need to, to make sure that both parties of the situation are heard and understand where we're all working in the same direction.
Okay. So, uh, I would ask you to, as only one board member, to, uh, speak with Ms. Fulton and Ms. Cobb to see about coming up with additional town halls. Right? I'm getting this, I'm sure Brad and Jerry and Jimmy's getting this too, as well as Randy. And, um, there, there's no sense in why we, as commissioners, uh, should be failing our citizens and not being able to answer these questions. I don't have all the answers. Uh, and, and I, I know Brad don't have them all, or, or Chief Gaffius, he might not have them all, but we can at least, we can at least all come together and come up with some kind of mutual agreement as to what we think is, as commissioners, what we think is best for the county citizens. Um, and so that being said, if, if we can get, get with the board at Pendleton MS Fire and come up with some dates prior to what, what's already been established, I think it would benefit, um, a lot of, a lot more citizens than it would hurt.
Sure. We will certainly do that.
There again, Commissioner George, I, I'm sorry to hear about your family loss. And I don't have anything else. I'll, uh, make a motion, or I can't make a motion, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have one more statement.
Okay.
One more statement while the public's here. This board is delaying hiring a county manager. Someone's delaying it, and it's killing the county, it's killing you as citizens. We need to hire a county, a county manager ASAP, and I'm not holding it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go in closed session for items three, four, five, and six.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.